I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert.
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
President.
Waller.
President.
King.
Present.
Pashusta.
President.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one of the motion for adoption of the agenda, we need a motion.
What additions and removals?
With additions.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, item two is a motion approving the minutes from December 2nd, 2019 and truth in taxation on December 4th. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, under recognitions and awards, Drich, looks like you're first. Well, actually, you're last, but we'll have you.
(laughing).
Ouch.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Administrator Clark, I've already eaten the crow before I came, so I don't have to eat it in front of you.
(laughing).
Since 1993, the city and the county have joined together to gather food for our community. Since that time, the city has won this award 20 times.
Cheaters.
(laughing).
Whose side are you on, King?
Divided allegiance sometimes.
How many times does a Coney won it in there?
Well, you'll have to do the math.
I didn't read.
You subtract it all out, it's something around seven, but that doesn't seem quite right. Certainly, we've won more than that. Last year, I suggested that perhaps the city may have been cheating, or may have done something.
It may have.
But I will have to admit that we, as a county, gave it our absolute best efforts this year. I oversaw the weighing of all of the food myself, checked to see if there were, you know, lead weights or something put in there, and there were none, so I will have to honestly concede that the city has beat the county once again, and with great humility, I present to you the award for the 2019 food campaign.
And, of course, there's no losers in this, because it's a food drive. I mean, it's just, it's a lot of fun, but it's a good thing, and I mean, you don't have any of the totals.
I do, I do, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, it's amazing how much food we've collected together over the years.
So this year combined, we collected 3,607 pounds, for a total of 59,150 pounds since 1993.
Like 30 tons, isn't it?
That's a lot of food, yes, yes.
Good, congratulations.
So we, we are grateful to be part of this, and I can hang this on the wall back there for you, if that serves you.
Well, we look forward to seeing you next year.
And next year, I'm taking the plaque home.
Retirement recognition, we have five different, one, two, three, four, five retirement plaques here, I'll read off the names. Patty Shattuck. Stephen, you want to say something about Patty?
Yes.
Yes, Patty.
Yeah, we'll have your, your boss tell you, tell us something about Patty.
Patty, thanks for coming tonight. Patty worked for us at the wastewater treatment plant for 19 years. She worked in the lab for that time, and was involved with testing of the wastewater to make sure that we were meeting MPC requirements, so, kind of behind the scenes, but yet very important job down at the treatment plant, so we'd like to thank Patty for her service.
All right. If you want, you can give a speech, otherwise, but you don't have to.
No. I haven't been busier than I normally am.
Okay, well, thank you.
So I don't know how I had time for work.
Well, thank you for the 19 years.
Thank you.
David Oliverstein, is David here tonight? Is, okay, well, we'll just, I suppose we can, oh, I'm, David's been city attorney for how long, Craig? You can say a few words about, about David. He's been city attorney for as long as I've been mayor, before that, his dad was the city attorney, he does negotiations, he's always been a reliable guy we can look to, and Craig has been doing a fine job carrying on in his, in his absence, but we, David was a very valued employee, and, I don't know, is anybody here, we'll keep that plaque and we'll get it to him. Brian Krieger, who's Brian Krieger? Oh, Brian Krieger, do a police chief, Brian, why don't you come on up? You know, I could probably say a few words about Brian. Brian started on the police department, what year did you start, Bri?
1984.
Eighty-four, a few years after me, but me and Brian worked together as detectives for 16 years, and we got a lot of stuff done and had a lot of fun, and Brian was our chief, how many years?
Nine.
And Brian, you were a very good chief. I thought Brian was one of the best, if not the best, chiefs that I had ever seen, so we're appreciative of what you have done and what David's continuing to do in the police department. Want to come up here and get your plaque?
Hi.
Your boss isn't here either. I remember Kim from back when Kim was just a, "Come on up and get your plaque," when you were just a regular old union person telling me I better not cave in on stuff when we were negotiating. Well, look how far you've come. Are you enjoying your retirement?
Yes.
Tell us how much.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
You did a nice job. Lastly, Matt, not last, Matt, but finally, Matt Holton. Matt, David, give us some.
I can take this one, too.
Yep. You worked with the problem.
I did, I started as a patrolman when Matt was patrolman, he was promoted and was my lieutenant for quite some time. An outstanding leader, that term servant leadership, Matt exemplified it before I even knew that was a term. There wasn't anything he wouldn't do for the guys he worked with, and just that example he set really inspired, I know myself, Lieutenant McCormick, Captain Clennan, and others, just an outstanding gentleman to work for.
And I know Matt started the whole dog thing, which has really taken off, not only in our department, but the sheriff's department, and I know he was kind of the initiator of all that, and he really did a good job on that, so Matt, we appreciate your service. And now we are to new officers. Chief.
Well, there's quite a gap between those who started in 1984 and those in 1986 versus those starting here in 2019, but, you know, hopefully, we have Brian Krieger and Matt Holton in the group here. Four of our five new officers are here tonight. Zachary Gass was not able to make it. They did start with us a couple months ago, but were unable to make it in that first day, they had to do some uniform fitting in the cities. So Daniel Osborne, Jeffrey Marks, you guys would stand up, Hannah Mueller, Sam Diggins. So these are four of the five new officers that we have. Two are local, just starting their career. Jeff is local, but worked elsewhere for a long time, and we've imported Daniel from down south. All are doing well, they're currently in their field training phase, meaning they're not patrolling on their own, they're not counting on our shift, but we hope in the next four to six weeks, they will complete that, and they will begin solo patrol, counting towards their various shifts, guessing they will probably end up on our afternoon and our night shifts.
How far down south? I want to know, I want to hear if you have an accent.
He does.
Kentucky.
Yeah. He's got an accent.
Said he's loving the weather so far.
All right. He's great.
He's been working on some of our northern slang, I caught him on the radio with the big Texas size 10-4 the other day, so.
All right. Well, glad to have you guys on board, you're joining a great department, I think, I look forward to you guys having a very good career.
How many more mules, mules can there be?
One more, one more, I've been told.
Yeah, three.
Three now.
Yeah. We have a three limit on the force.
Yeah. That's good, though.
And then the other two we have are, we also started two new community service officers roughly the same week, or the week after, so Nick Zaggo and Brady McDermott, if you guys want to stand up. Nick's working the full-time position for us, Brady's working the 20-hour position, also doing our parking enforcement, so if you got a ticket recently.
Which one's next?
I thank Brady for that, but we are, we are enforcing it, you know, he's also out of Gerard, and they were kind enough to give him a little bit of a break to come down here and be recognized, so.
All right, well, congratulations. Always nice getting new officers on fire, police, anywhere. Okay, we are to, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, under public hearing, reviewing the five-year capital improvement plan, Tom. Thanks, guys.
For you tonight is the capital improvement plan that staff has put together and council reviewed over a few meetings. For 2020 through 2024, we're looking at spending just under $152 million, about 78 million of the treatment plan. And tonight, again, this is a public hearing, you can take input from the public, but after that, we'd request council approve the capital improvement plan, which will then set in motion the 2020 capital projects, and put 2021 through 2024 as kind of placeholders for departments to plan on.
Okay, council, anything? Comments, questions? Public hearing, is there anybody here tonight in the audience that wishes to address our capital improvement plan? If not, we need a resolution adopting the capital improvement plan.
So moved, resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Kevin and Doreen Nelson. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor members, application before you for tax abatement at 2407 12th Avenue Southwest, estimated value of $350,000. Application is in conformance with our standing program, council actions requested to approve, and this is a public hearing.
All right, council, council has nothing, it's a public hearing, anybody in the audience want to have some input on this? If not, we need a resolution approving or denying the abatements.
So moved, resolution.
Approve it.
Approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Okay, and number seven is a resolution approving a tax levy for the year 2020, Mr. Dankert.
City council held their truth in taxation hearing on December 4th, we had two citizens show up, went through the process with council, and at that meeting, council recommended a tax levy for payable 2020 of $7,150,000, and we'd recommend council approval of such.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for seven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight is a resolution adopting the budget for 2020. Tom?
At that same hearing, council discussed the proposed budget for 2020, at this point in time, it's at $35,945,802, and at that meeting, council recommended approval of that, that budget for 2020.
Basically, we need a resolution for.
So moved, resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution authorizing cancellation of certain ad valorem tax levies, Tom?
Council, when they issued bonds for certain projects, they had, as part of the bond issuance was the authorization for council to pass a tax levy to pay for the bonds if, if there was not adequate dollars to cover such. The Geo Utility Revenue Bonds in 2010A have assessments being paid off by those within the Lansing Township area, and the capital improvement bonds in 2015A are bonds that the Austin Utilities had to issue for their new facility. Both projects have revenues coming in, such that we don't need a tax levy to pay for those bonds, so we'd request council approve a resolution to not tax the citizens for that.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for nine.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution granting 2020 licenses for the sale of hard liquor, on sale, Sunday hard liquor on sale, Sunday wine on sale, and 3-2 beer on and off sale. Ms. Kable?
Yes, this is the last of our liquor resolutions, we've had a couple over the last couple months, these ones are issued primarily by the city, so they are on the agenda tonight, and I will note that our mass license renewal was also on the consent agenda, so we have a couple hundred licenses that will be going out tomorrow with your approval of all this.
Council, if there's nothing, we need a resolution.
So moved, resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a motion and an ordinance, reviewing an ordinance for engine braking. Chief?
Some of our council members have gotten complaints from constituents on engine braking, especially in the 218 and I-90 area. This language would give us a specific tool to try to address this through citations and ordinance, and also post signs specific to this type of noise.
Thank you, council, anything? If not, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, and we need be an ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, we no longer have 12, so we'll go to 13 is a resolution for state aid municipal street maps. Mr. Lang?
At the last work session, we presented areas of the community where we could designate additional roadway mileage to maximize our state aid street mileage, and with that, we would recommend a council approval to redesignate 4th Avenue, 19th Street, and 6th Avenue Northwest, and remove a couple roadway sections to make that possible.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for 13.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is a series of people, we'll do these as one, appointing the following individuals to the Arts and Culture Committee. Herve Induenda, Doug Knuckles, John Dale, Elizabeth Leek, Miranda Moin, Janet Anderson, and Laura Helly, you can, I don't know, I didn't mention their terms, but you can see them there. If there's anything, if there's not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, 15 is a resolution approving a franchise extension with Spectrum through June 30, 2020. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, mayor members have visited with Winona, and they are exchanging some back and forth on their agreement, that helps us plot a course forward for our negotiation. They have two providers in their community, so I think in the past, council felt like that gives a little bit more leverage, and probably better to allow them to move first with Spectrum. As a result, we still need to do an extension, and we'd recommend doing that through June 30th of 2020.
Council, any input, questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for 15.
So moved, resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is a motion appointing Karim Salas Ramirez as honorary council member, February through April 2020, just need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, 17 is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with Hormel Foods, Mr. Lang?
This agreement with Hormel is related to the Hormel Annex Spice Plant, which is located at 1816 9th Street Northeast. This is a new ICM agreement, or a new facility agreement, and we've broken it up into two segments that in total are over a duration of five years. First, there is an eight-month period, starting January 1st of 2020 and carrying through September, actually, that'd be a nine-month period, but that would allow Hormel to develop and implement strategies and equipment to meet the lower regulations that will come as of October 1st of 2020, and then the lower limits would then carry from October 1st of 2020 through December 31st of 2025, making this a total of five-year agreement, and with the items included, we would recommend council approval.
Council, any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for 17.
So moved, resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Abstain.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0 with one abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you. 18 is a resolution approving a DNR grant extension for the North Main Flood Control Project Phase 1, Mr. Lang?
Yes, we received a grant in April of 2018 for construction of the flood control project across the road here behind the rec center. The grant was in the amount of $1,125,000, and that paid for 50% of the flood project costs. That project actually came in under budget, which is a good thing, we're working on finalizing that now, and it's, it's about 300, there'll be about $300,000 remaining in the grant, and we have talked with our contact at the DNR to work with them to get the grant extended, because the expiration date is currently December 31st of 2019, coming up right around the corner, and also, get, not only get it extended, but allow us to use it for other areas, and, so they have added verbiage in the document that will allow us to use it for engineering, design services, and levy construction down at the wastewater treatment plant. That's kind of our next levy project, so this will help us get started on the design portion of that work, so we'd recommend approving amendment number one, which will extend the completion date to December 31st of 2021, and allow us to use it on additional upcoming projects at the treatment plant.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for 18.
So moved, resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 19 is a resolution approving a detour agreement with Mendat. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, as we've talked about before, Mendat's planning to resurface I-90 coming into Austin from pre-tran corners, or the Oakland exit west of town, and by doing that roadway reconstruction, that will restrict travelers from exiting at Oakland Avenue West or Highway 105, so travelers will need to continue on I-90 and exit at 14th Street, take 14th Street south to Oakland Avenue to reach their destination that they would have taken had they exited at exit 175. So, in order to make that work, in order to, for Mendat to run traffic on local streets, they have developed an agreement, whereas they would pay the city $568.82 for what they call road life consumed and maintenance. They use a different formula to determine the volume of traffic that will occur on 14th Street during the duration of the detour, and they utilize the same formula when working with counties and other municipal agencies throughout the, throughout the state. So, the maintenance that would be our responsibility would just be patching of potholes, things that we do normally, and 14th Street Northwest is set up for this type of traffic, so we don't see this as a negative, so we would recommend to council to approve the agreement for the detour route on 14th Street Northwest as part of the I-90 project.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for 19.
Does Mendat do anything for like, you know, you got a couple of gas stations that are right off of there, there's no like economic impact offset that they do, right?
Nope. There's an impact, but.
Come.
Anybody else? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved, resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Twenty is a resolution declaring the property of 1,001 7,000 Northeast is hazardous, just need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twenty-one is a series of three motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations, A, 507 1st Avenue Southwest, the Velacity property, need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed. B, 301 Main Street, or 301 Main Street South, the Shell property, need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And C, 707 8th Avenue Southwest, the Clark property.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. We're now to the section, citizens addressing the town.
We have one more to add.
Twenty-one D.
Okay. Twenty-one D needs a motion, removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at 1107 4th Avenue Northwest, the Ramirez property, need a motion.
First.
When they say 4th Street Northwest.
So moved.
Two seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Are there any citizens here that wish to address council tonight on items that are not on tonight's council? Marilyn, why don't you come up here and give us your name and your address?
Good evening. Marilyn Pernasil, 2017, 6th Avenue Northeast, and I'm here concerning the Christmas lights on Main Street, and I would first like to thank you for your time, and I know you have a meeting to go to, or let's say a dinner to go to afterwards, so I hope you enjoy that, I'll try not to take up too much time. I would like to start out in telling you a story, I'm not looking for sympathy or anything, it's just as to what led me to do this. December 10th, 2017, I know that's two years ago, I was in Apple Valley, Minnesota, church, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I got out of my car and was met at the door, "Give me your money, or I'll shoot you." That changed my life that day, it really did, and I worked with a really, really good detective that day, I hope that we have as good a detective as in Austin.
We do.
I really do. Actually, I hope I never meet any of them, but I'm sure they're just as good. But anyway, I remember that day, that night, when we were coming back, Brian, that was his name, had driven me, my daughter, and the pastor of the church to a place where they pulled the car over. I was able to describe the car, but there was no license plate, but they were actually able to catch, catch the guys. Sadly, all they could get them for was credit card fraud because I couldn't describe the person. All I could look at that night, that day, was the coat and the gun, that's all I really noticed. But anyway, I said to Brian that night, "I don't know why I'm still here," you know, I told him no three times, he asked for my money, I said I didn't have any money, he asked for my wallet, I said I didn't have a wallet, and then he said, "Give me your purse," I said, "No, it's mine," you know, you can't have that. Well, he grabbed it, drug me to the car, as I'm screaming my head off, and I could still see the gun pointed at me, I don't know why he didn't shoot me. Anyway, I remember Brian saying, "Well, you have to figure that out." So I figured, I tried to do good in my life, better than I was, caring for people, I care for the city of Austin, but I really truly think that the display of Christmas lights are very sad for the size of town that we have, you know, and everybody wants to promote Austin as a great community. Well, I'm disappointed, and I'm on this website, not website, Facebook thing, you know you're from Austin, Minnesota, and someone put on there about the sad situation of the lights, and I agreed with them. Normally, I don't say anything on there, but with a little persistence, I finally found out who's responsible for them, which led me to Stephen Lang, and I realize it's only one month out of the year, but I think it's important, I know people were mentioning on there about their kids, how disappointed, you know, bringing their kids in and the lights, and I commented to Stephen, I sent him an email, that some of the lights are totally burned out, or they're only partially, they're partially burned out, and he sent me an email back, "Thank you, Stephen, we check each snowflake to make sure that it is working before we install them. If there are some that are not lit, it may be a faulty electrical outlet on the streetlight. It has been a couple years now without an intersection tree at 2nd Avenue and Main Street. The casing in the ground that holds the I-beam in the southeast corner is failing, and we were concerned that it would not hold the weight of the decorations, that's why it hasn't been lit." So I don't know if there are any plans to...
If I could.
Yes.
I saw the Facebook stuff, I think my wife was even on there, I didn't, I thought the Chamber owned them, because they did at one point, but at some point, the city's taking them over. I was there at Christmas in the city when we turned the lights on, and I was, I looked at them, I thought, "There's something wrong with these lights."
Oh, you did think that, that's good.
I talked to Stephen, and I said, "We plan on bringing it up, and I'm gonna guess that we're probably gonna have new decorations up next year," that's up to the council, but you know, we're gonna, I think they're checking prices already, I thought these were LED lights, I thought they lasted for a long time, I don't know how many years these have been up, maybe 10 years?
Yeah, over 10 years.
No, okay, I didn't know.
I thought they're LEDs, they've lasted a long time, but you know, we'll, I don't think that we're gonna put those lights up next year.
I'm sorry?
I don't think, I think you're gonna see different lights up next year, that's up to council, we've gotta bring it up, you know, but I agree with you, and I think council, and councils told me that they've gotten, a lot of councils gotten a lot of complaints about them.
You have, that's, that's good to hear.
Yep.
That's good, so I guess I'm not the only one. I heard, I thought I was, I was on a doomed crusade.
No.
You know, but...
I drove downtown after some other, you know, first that one night, then I drove downtown a couple of times, and they're really not fair, I mean, if we could do something this year, we would, but we're not gonna take them down.
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
I'm guessing, I'd be surprised if you didn't see new lights up there next year.
And I realize they cost a lot of money, because I've, I Googled it to see if I could find, you know, prices.
How much were they?
Well, one was about $385, but it was for a snowflake, and I'm thinking, I don't want snowflakes.
We do take donations too, though.
And you know, I would be willing to donate.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna be necessary, we'll see how we do it, but you know, I'm guessing that, you know, Stephen's already looking into it, and I'm guessing he'll have something put in front of the council in due time, probably before summer, summertime.
Okay.
You know, we need to do it in time that we can get everything taken care of by Christmas.
I appreciate that, I really do.
Thank you for coming forward too, and you know, it's important to us to hear from people here and not on Facebook, because we don't see it all the time on there, and there's always answers to everything that people don't know about, so I thank you for doing that.
And you know, I'm on that Facebook thing, and I normally don't say anything, but that just struck a chord with me, and I thought, well, you know, if I can muster up the courage[1556.45]